Okay, so I have a one point three student council representative. Stefano Scher, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, welcome, and I know this will be you and Maggie Hammond is the alternate. You guys are gonna cover the meetings between the two of you?
Yeah, we'll rotate.
Okay.
Which far, whichever one works for us then.
Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you got interested in this? Or maybe you were voluntold or was this kinda what?
Well, it was a little bit of both. Yeah, it thought it'd be cool, try something out, be good for my resume and learn how different things work around the school from a broader perspective.
Good, alright, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Stefano, you want to tell a little bit about what program you're in currently?
Uh, CTE program, I'm in electrical class, our resume is stolen a week ago. And yeah, we offer different internships over there, so I'm working on getting an internship. Uh, you gotta apply by yourself like to different electrical companies or like if you're a plumber, different plumbing companies. Yeah, so they offer those for any of the CTE programs.
What's your in electric, electrician?
Uh, so I'm thinking about going to Marine Corps and um, uh, they offer electrical as an MOS in the Marines, so I can complete my apprenticeship in the Marines and then I just, I wouldn't have to go to college that way. It'd be a good place to start right out of school.
Excellent, alright.
So tell us a little bit about what's going on in high school?
Uh, yeah, so at the Career Center, there's a few colleges, a couple colleges coming in, TC three and Fingertown Community College and uh, I'm not too sure on what's going on in the Career Center, it's more Maggie saying she works in the Career Center, but I know there's two colleges coming in very soon.
Any events coming up that you guys are working on?
Homecoming, uh, and we're working on dances and stuff, I'm not too sure yet, cause uh, we just got started, but I'm sure I'll find out more soon.
Sounds good. Thanks, Stefano.
Moving on to two point one, action of the agenda, need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Motion here.
Okay, rule of rule of the minutes from August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, need a motion?
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Motion here.
It's just four point one. So personnel items, personnel consent, four point one, need a motion?
So, second.
Any discussion for that?
Just a question, there was the change in the salary contract, I guess, would I guess, was there a delay on getting this signed and approved prior to prior to the required change in salary? And I thought we had, I guess I thought we had to have
Yeah, we had, yep, we had tentative agreement, but then we, there were some questions about some of the language in which we, we had to meet it up. And then obviously this gave an export meeting since we, since we were able to meet and be able to get an agenda. But yeah, this is the official, official contract, the other was the tentative agreement.
The changes of salary that are in there. Yeah. Yes.
Uh, I did have a question. Oh, um, so I see some teacher aides, their rate is fifteen sixty eight, and then other teacher aides are seventeen ten, is that like contractual, is that what makes changes the rate?
Anything else for discussion?
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Motion here.
Okay, item five, finance, finance items for action, five point one through five point five, need a motion?
So move.
Second.
One second.
And then any discussion on those topics?
Yeah, I have a couple questions. Um, on the five point one, what is, I think, wrong with SWD programs?
Uh, students with disabilities.
Okay, and it's going to, what's that age to?
It's going from, yeah, from a account, students with disabilities account to, there's an additional services line that's associated to students with disabilities. So there's some additional services for students, which is a transfer or whatever like that.
For the disposal items? Sorry, did I?
Yeah, there are two, so the, the portable basketball hoops that we had for a long, long time, um, so those are with the new things in the gym, um, those are, and outdated and not functioning a lot.
Do we have that purely for, I don't see if, like a YMCA or something, there are boys that want to
We could, yeah, we could check.
Are you?
I'm not sure how functional they are at this point, but if they are, we certainly could we could certainly see if boys and girls does it or something like that.
Isn't there a, a way to, uh, what we're calling, what we're stacking, auctioning?
We could, we could auction, yeah.
I mean, I would like to ask.
When was the last time they were used?
Uh, that's a great question, probably last basketball season, maybe? Yeah, they were, they, they kept on a little bit, no, not, not even that, yeah.
But did
They should, one, one of them of the past year, but now they're all apart and, yeah.
Yeah.
Did they stay up if you set them to ten feet?
No, not, they're, not, one of them could've been not secured.
Do you know if they're fixable? I mean, with reason within reason?
I could explain and see if they think they're fixable or not, but
It just seems like we could probably get something from, I think, other than, we could have a scrapbook.
Yeah, probably. I mean, we could add it to the list, cause a lot of other things for auctions, well, we could put it on the auction list of things that I still don't know in terms of the safety wise of it at this point. Where, if we were to donate it to someplace, I'd want to make sure that it was functioning and all working and not gonna fall on somebody and hurt them, so.
The Verizon wire is in there?
Yeah, so there's been, there's been like a mini little booster antenna tower that's been on the backside of OFA for long before I even was here. Um, there was a lease, a lease agreement with Verizon on that for, for years as far as booster, I guess, is what it essentially gets used for.
Do you really know if that eighteen hundred that's in there covers electricity that uses it? We have recent ISEs and stuff, sure.
Eric has criticized it, so I would say yes.
He's pretty good at recognizing like, if you haven't driven a campus lately. But it's turned out quickly.
And I have one question.
Sure.
On a contract for division repair. Williamsburg, that's quite a ways away, isn't it? Like up by Albany?
It's up in Albany, yeah.
Yeah, so like, is we talking about services for one student?
Yes, my guess would be this student is, is probably in, uh,
Residential.
A residential type program.
Residential.
So they're working closer to that where that student is located.
Okay, but I just wanted, this, this service is provided in person?
Yes.
Yep.
And there's no, so then it wouldn't be, I just wonder, would somebody close, but you're saying she is close to the facility?
Yeah, most likely it's a residential placement that's closer to this entity to be able to provide that service. We wouldn't be able, it'd be quite the distance.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know why it was Williamsburg, but if that's where, if this, this child is a resident, so.
We do have some students that are in residential facilities throughout the state. Some states are state, but then again, valid.
Anything else?
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Six point one and two miscellaneous items, transportation requests and CPSC, CSC recommendations, need a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Teresa? Hi.
Motion here.
First is just the only thing I was gonna say, we had conversations about the Blue River Commission.
Yeah.
And, um, it was important to get some kind of public forum, either someone coming here or, um, it's a webinar?
Yep.
Get a report.
Alright, so Bob and Mike are putting a committee together with folks, everybody from the board that's interested on, on that piece. This, this is the, the portrait is what they've, um, adapted at the moment, but it hasn't been officially approved, doesn't get officially approved until they can tell the end of October. So, uh, we're just gonna pull a group together, uh, really to take some feedback on folks understanding, I mean, it's really kind of set in terms of what the state is saying that the portrait of graduate is. Um, I don't think we have much, such wiggle room at all with that, but I think what we're trying to do is, is to associate the different things and programs that we have to whatever that existing portrait of graduate is that, that they've come out with. So hopefully that work can come out of that committee to be a little bit more extensive, to see the full picture of this, you know, the, the rollout of this blue river.
Hey, just, um, you know, you guys, what comes to mind, do you wanna go back so far as to, uh, kind of, kind of course, all the rules rolled out?
Yep.
In many districts, we didn't have very, um, more information that the public has on changes that are coming.
Yes. Yeah, I think right now, there's still, from a state standpoint, they, they don't have all the questions answered in terms of, you know, some, some challenges of rolls out, rollouts for different cohorts and, and different things that come up that maybe they haven't thought about at this point that could become issues over time, so I do think some of it is gonna kind of evolve over the next couple of years with maybe some slight changes here and there with, with how it fully gets rolled out.
I think just in general
Yes.
I know they think people can go online and people can see it, but I think they can do that.
Yeah, I think we'll plan to, to update on the website and add additional information as that goes, but we've had good luck with webinars, uh, people just because they can jump out at any point in time, whether they're still at work or they're, you know, at some other event that um, we can kind of take them through it and answer some questions about, up to this point, what we know and what we don't know.
So we got, uh, committee report.
Yeah, I was, we have the first legislative committee meeting is coming Thursday at six P M, and so at the next morning, I can present a summary for all of you. Um, but I wanted to just remind, if you haven't gotten any of this kind of presentation, OSIS is willing to do service tours, uh, some of us were there last year. Uh, but this, it'll be on Wednesday, the twenty fourth at five P M, and they'll take you throughout the OSIS facility there on campus and on Glenwood. So if you're interested, let me know and I will let Rebecca Stone know. Uh, anyway, I'll report back down on the legislative committees topics for the, for the year and, um, and we'll go from there.
All of the committees, uh, should we tell?
Yeah, just a couple of things, um, I want to thank staff and, uh, our administration for a great start so far, whereas I had a wood, just to be, just to just to be safe, but all, a pretty good, uh, pretty good rollout of this school year so far. Really excited to see the, you know, the, the learning that's happening throughout the entire campus. Um, we have Carrie, Luke, who's here tonight, was some guests who, uh, were gonna give us kind of a summer enrichment camp, camp recap. So she's gonna take us through that. Just quickly updating you, as you know, the cell phone law went into place, um, our students are engaged in, in that, they each have their own pouch. Um, so far, just based on some conversation, students seems to be going okay. Not that everybody loves it, but they're, you know, they're complying and I think doing a pretty good job of it so far, so talking to Mr. Schofield and Mr. Michael, same, they feel kind of the same, that students have been pretty good about embracing, uh, embracing the change so far. So that's been, that's been good. Uh, on Wednesday, and Stefano knows about this, there's a student board of education member training at OSIS. So just gonna take them, just gonna kind of take them through what the roles of boards are, uh, kind of what their role would be as a, as a student board member. Um, and just answer questions for them, so a couple hour training, they'll get some lunch out of it, I think, and, uh, it'd be a, a nice event for them to attend.
Just Sandy Roofo was very excited about talking to all of you, she really is, she just thinks it's a wonderful addition to our area to help bring our students up to speed, it's really great, so, hope we can make it.
Yeah, I think it'll be great, Sandy's definitely taking that up. Uh, just quickly again, I know I updated previously on this, um, the gym floor design has started to happen. The Riverhawks are actually in the middle of the court right now, um, but it's obviously a stage by stage process for uh, getting everything that needs to be completed there, so, uh, we're hopeful in the next week and a half, two weeks that we'll have it and be able to get on it and get after it, so, uh, excited for that. Uh, we have, uh, in terms of the music suite area, the ductwork has, is primarily, I would say probably ninety percent done. Uh, our ceilings are starting to go in into those areas, the floor will come after, um, and then obviously, uh, all the additional, uh, cabinetry and things of that nature will, will start to go in, so that'll, as I said before, that's gonna get phased in, it's starting in October, we'll kind of take back a room at a time. Uh, until that, that's fully completed. So the pool keeps making progress, we did get our timing systems in, they actually installed them, so that's a, that's a positive in terms of being able to get that back a little bit quicker than they knew we anticipated. Um, and then we have, if you're available Friday night, there's a, the, under the lights, what do they call it, Luke, I, I don't wanna misrepresent what the name of it is, but
The nineteen, what, the five K?
Yeah, nineteen light five K that, um, uh, the cross country team's been doing the last couple of years, it's a great event, there'll be thousands of people on campus. Probably one of the most attended events we have all year. Uh, so far, it's gonna be tricky, but we'll make, we'll, we'll make it work, John does an incredible job of organizing and getting volunteers to help with parking, and he's, he's on it. Like it's, he runs a really tight, uh, really tight event, so we're excited for that, uh, you're gonna see a lot of glow glow gear going on out there, and I think the first race maybe takes off at like six fifteen, so our regular practices and things of that nature will be able to kind of make their way out, but obviously others will be coming in at the same time, so it's gonna be a busy night, we're excited for it.
The, the update on the, uh, large group instruction room?
Yep.
Last time I saw it, they're just installing the seats?
Yeah, the seats are in, the large group instruction is done, um, the only piece I think that we're really waiting on is just the rallying to go in um, up the ramp for the ADA purposes, so we have a temporary rallying right now. Um, I know the students have been, uh, been in and out of there already, so it's a nice, uh, nice space to get a chance to check it out, it's pretty sharp.
Yeah.
And that's it, so Carrie, would you like to introduce your guest and talk a little bit on summer enrichment?
Yes, I decided, since I was just listening to me talk, I would've been one, one people with me. Um, so this is Sarah Whitney, she's a pre-K teacher at OES who worked, um, on a new program this summer, and this is made in Philly, she was one of the interns that I've had the past two summers, so they're gonna talk in a little bit and I'll kind of kick us off. So, first thing is that this was like my third summer working summer enrichment, kind of in this capacity. And while I am doing a lot behind the scenes, um, it's not just me. Um, I've got the athletic office with Ashley and Ryan and Darcy working on the purchasing and helping with the finance part of it. Um, support of the whole admin team, the transportation department plays a huge part in routing the students all summer, cause we do the drive bus into and from summer enrichment. Um, the OES and students are very patient with the fact that we have um, lots of students in OES while they're trying to get ready for the school year, the same with the middle and high school, they're working around who's offering classes while they're trying to get wax and all of that. And then of course, um, a big thank you to the teachers that choose to come back and work summer enrichment, um, during their time off, because without them teaching, we would not have the programs that we have. So, just thank you to all of them, because it's definitely not a one person show, it's all of us working together to pull this off. So, I just wanted to give you this, yeah, I've never really talked about this part before, um, kind of the timeline of what goes into planning for summer for those six weeks in July and August. Um, I start in February and I'm looking at what happened to last year and feedback I've gotten and how we can make improvements and enhancements for the upcoming summer. And I start thinking about logistics of what's the time going to be, what six weeks are we going to do, how does it fit into everything else that's going down on campus? Um, then when March rolls around, we open up proposal windows to teachers for what programs they would like to offer or be a part of. And then I start the master schedule of what is happening every week and making sure there's not too much one week and not enough next week and trying to spread things out over the summer. Once I get through March and all of that, we start working on the program, approving program proposals for teachers so they know what they're teaching. Um, I, I start interviewing summer, for summer interns and staff, and so do all the other college intern programs, they start doing interviews and recommending people to be hired. And then we are working very closely with OSIS on our summer supply orders to make sure that the things that teachers need to teach their classes are here by July. Um, that's kind of the slow part, and then once we get into May and June, I start looking at what field trips can be offered for our Hoxnest Elementary students. Um, the big reason I've pushed for that is because I know when it comes to literacy, background knowledge is very important. And so this is a way to give students more background knowledge and more experiences, so they can bring that into the classroom when they come in in September. Um, I work on building and publishing the summer brochure with all of our offerings. And then registration opens, this year, if one, if you have kids, it did not open at midnight, I learned how to change it, but it opened, I believe, at eight or nine A M. So it was during a normal day, so no one was up in the middle of the night on a laptop trying to register, um, and managing the waitlist. And then I'm working on monitoring and adjusting registrations and getting people into programs. Then the transportation department takes over once that's done, and they start building the routes. Um, I hold an orientation for the interns that are working Hoxnest. And then starts the work of building all the master schedules, rostering assignments. Um, for Hoxnest, it is, um, I do build six master schedules, I have to build a different schedule every week just because depending on what's being offered, I can't, we can't always do the same thing in the same timeline, um, so it does change, it does change every week. And the bus transportation also is creating rostered routes and rosters every week. So that's just kind of a little bit of what goes into it before summer even starts. Um, this summer, we had four hundred and forty-four students registered across the district for different programs throughout the summer. Um, I kind of wrote that down, our elementary program, Hoxnest, is probably our most popular program, we have about a hundred and seventy student registered every week, if I average that across the six weeks. Um, in our secondary programs, when I looked at the different weeks, it was about eighty students or so. Um, music programs, I asked Mrs. Ligon, she said they offered lessons to about fifty students per week. Plus we had elementary piano, which was twelve students. And we also had elementary piano lessons as well. And then in our, for sports conditioning, um, there were eleven sports programs that offered summer training for their teams, um, during the summer. So kind of the breakdown of what we offer for grades one through five this year, we had a six week inclusive program, which is Hoxnest, which has different themes, you do different trips. And that has continued to be a great program, it's great having the kids there all day and they get exposed to so much, we had Spanish this year, we had Italian, we had French. We had robotics and steam and Legos and sports and mini golf. Really anything you could want your kids to do in the summer, they were able to do at Hoxnest. Um, I'll let Sarah talk about our kindergarten program in just a minute. Um, I've been trying to kind of brand our summer enrichment programs around the Riverhawks, so this year, in our six through twelve, we still offered our half day or full day classes, um, I kind of called the Riverhawks Rising to kind of give them their own identity. And then we also had different youth sports camps embedded over the six weeks, half day programs, they could do, we have field hockey, we have softball, we have boys basketball, girls basketball, tennis. Time forgetting, so, there were, there were a lot.
Soccer.
Soccer, yes, there was soccer too, thank you. Um, and then our music programs were called soaring sounds, and that went all the way from elementary to high school music programs and lessons offered. And then lastly, we did also offer, teams offered sports conditioning for those modified JV and varsity teams. So that's just kind of a quick overview of everything that happened over the summer. Alright, so a new program that we had this year was called soaring into kindergarten, and I went to the pre-K and kindergarten teams and said, I had this great idea this morning. If I've been really thinking about how can we prepare our kindergarten students for what it's like to begin to get in a kindergarten classroom and kindergarten expectations and start to get to know them and kind of get those foundational skills going. And they said, that's a great idea, and now we're gonna take over, because you gave us the idea, now we're gonna take it over. And I said, that's great, look, you know what I can do to support you, and so this is Sarah Whitney, and she took the lead on it, and I'm gonna have her kind of tell a little about what happened during that program.
Yeah, we had a great combination of pre-K teachers, aides in the building, and our, some of our kindergarten teachers, so students came in and they could get familiar with the teachers that they move up to next year, um. We facilitated a three week program, it was half days, just cause they're so little, we just figured a little introduction, not to go over their whole summer. Um, it was, we did three full weeks with four interactive centers, we did crafts and science, mathematics, uh, E L A, sensor and emotional learning where they strengthened their fine motor skills, they found creativity in different crafts, followed multi-step directions. In science, they encourage, we encouraged curiosity, problem solving, hands-on explorations. Um, some of our kindergarten teachers kind of led the academic side, just to get them kind of refreshed and ready. Um, and then we had some OTPT and speech therapists that came, excuse me, came in to kind of work through social emotional regulation. Um, each week followed a theme that was geared obviously towards our kindergarten levels, so we did a beach theme and an animal theme. The last week we did a carnival, which just happened to line up to the tab of coming fair, so they were really excited about that. We had some local, um, businesses come in with cotton candy machines, we borrowed a, um, popcorn machine from the high school and just had a really nice fun Friday to end our camp. We decided to do it the last three weeks of enrichment to kind of lead right into the transition to kindergarten. So that summer slide wasn't as noticeable with our kindergarten friends, and I think from our kindergarten teachers so far, they're coming in confident and they feel ready and they're comfortable in their classrooms and with the staff, so overall it was a lot of fun. I wasn't quite ready to let my UPK friends go, so with Carrie came to me and said, would you be interested, I was like, yes, one couple more weeks with these friends that I had just watched grow, grown the whole year prior, so I was really excited to be a part of the program and we had a lot of wonderful staff and we were able to work one-on-one with, we had about sixty kids, so, just wonderful.
Yep. And I had a kindergarten teacher today say that she had only, only two children, that she's still actively working on having them write their names. That they could, everyone just last can write their, write their own name, so that was
Yeah.
Yeah, they had, they had a great time, and it was just enough of a taste of school, I think.
Yeah, I think so too, we incorporated it in very hands-on.
And they had to ride the bus in in the morning, but they had ridden the bus before, they got to have breakfast and lunch. Supervised with, with you guys, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And before they got picked up midday, so, um, it was very, they were on the same, every, every day.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
So, it was a great addition, I think we'll continue to go on.
And it was a nice blend with the AES friends obviously as well, even from a kindergarten level, you know, they when they get into the middle school, but I think that was an awesome start, because of the young
That is a great part of enrichment, is that all summer kids are meeting kids between the two buildings, so as they get to know each other each summer, cause a lot of kids come back every summer for this program, they do kind of a familiar face once they get to the middle school, because they've been spending time with them every summer for the past, till other many summers.
Yeah, yeah, we're in the sort of in the kindergarten, it's a little fun. We were talking a couple times, I'm like, I don't know if the staff's having more fun than the kids. We were talking a couple times, I'm like, I don't know if the staff's having more fun than the kids or what, but we're all having fun, so it worked out great.
And Mrs. Bangle stayed until she had a baby, so.
Yes, she did.
She stayed in them.
It was pretty impressive.
Yeah, it was pretty impressive.
Like Ashley watched the, you, you, what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's a little bit about our Soaring Into Kindergarten program and then we'll move into what I would say is probably one of the greatest things I like about the summer is the summer internship program that we built. Um it started kind of a soft launch about three years ago with a few interns and then it's really grown um the past two years with what we offer. Um we have, you know, now we have an internship program for students going into education, like specifically elementary education. Um we've had a couple of interns that are going into nursing and they work with the nurses. Um students going into psychology, PT, OT, um they wanna be a school psychologist, so they're getting that experience, which means we've got students that work in building trades and sports conditioning with Mr. Taylor. We have um music education interns that come and help support the music program with all the lessons. Um we've had some students work in IT in the summer for internship and then we've got students that are going into communications or things like that, working with um PR in the summer, so they're getting some coming back or to this area and kind of working and getting experience related to what they're studying in college. So I did ask, this is Megan Fellisetti, I asked, she's been an interview for two years and I asked her to comment tonight to kind of share a little bit about what she's learned in the summer internship program and how it's kind of helped her.
Okay, Megan. Hi, um so yeah, I'm going into education, obviously elementary education, I just started my student teaching um this semester, so um I'd say going into this camp with the first year that I got hired, I knew I wanted to work with kids, but I wasn't sure exactly if that meant education for sure, I was still like a little confused, I mean, I love kids, I don't know. It was like literally after maybe like the first week here, I was like, yes, this is what I wanna do. Um I think it was such a difference because I observed in lots of schools before, I've seen how the classrooms work, but actually being able to be in kind of like a school setting every day of the week with the kids was able to like give me kind of more of a sense of what school's gonna look like every day. Um so yeah, that helped a lot with this, like me being able to decide that this is what I wanna do. And then also actually going into what it looked like, um it was super cool because the first year that I worked here, I was with the same group of kids the whole summer, so I was able to build these relationships, understand like behavior issues and how to deal with that because I was being told kind of like what to do with classroom management and behaviors, but actually being able to like get to know the kids and their needs and their personalities, that was like really huge and I learned a lot and how to deal with that and take that into student teaching. And then this summer, I was able to work with two different um grade levels, first grade for three weeks and then fourth grade for three weeks and I always thought I like wanted to be the littles, I was like, older ones, no. Um which I still do love the littles, I think that's my favorite. But I was able to work with fourth graders um for the last three weeks of camp and at first I was like, oh no, why are we such a scary group? I'm either, um but I yeah, I love the fourth graders, it was so cool and a lot of the fourth graders, I had the year before in third grade, so being able to like get to know them again and have that relationship already with them was huge and I had some students um in my group that were kind of more known as like uh-oh, like you know, they might have some behavior issues, um but I honestly just learned that like, I just like know who love them even more, so that was really cool because it can have been scary going into it and knowing that you might have some issues with behavior, but I ended up like being more drawn to those students and building really close connections with them, so yeah, it's definitely helped a lot now, like me starting, this is gonna be my third week of student teaching. Um it's, it's definitely helped a lot having this background the last two years.
Have they changed the certification, do you know, Perry, from the birth through two and then the, the one through six, has that changed in childhood education?
I'm not sure, I, I can really only speak to, um my daughter just decided to go into education and she said she's early childhood.
Okay.
But from my reasoning, what she told me, it's back to like she's going birth to six. So six, right, I think you can choose either or, or you can do the whole, the whole, the whole one, so.
Yeah, one time it was just one in the area, but now.
Yeah, I think that you can, I think from what I'm hearing now from different people is they can do, you can do birth to six or you could specialize in one area or the other.
That's wonderful.
You can choose, it goes from either birth um through first grade and then the other one is second to sixth. But then you can also, some schools offer that you can just do birth through sixth grade, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Oniata.
Where are you student teaching?
Newark Valley.
And then do you have a second school for like the second half?
Yeah, so I'm at Newark Valley again, I'm in the elementary for the first one and then the middle school for the second one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um one thing we added, I added this year to the internship program was we had I added weekly staff meetings. And so they get to an experience, like a little mini faculty meeting where we had an agenda and things to talk about and then every week I brought in a different guest speaker to talk about some aspect of working in education. Um Heather came one week and she talked about elements of the good lesson. And Chris Bangle came one week and she talked about what to expect your first year and kind of the power of mentorship and how to use that um when you get into your first job. Stacy came one week, she talked about what to look for in um what she looks for in a candidate about interviewing, so just to give them more information as they learned um kind of what, what goes into teaching and I think it was helpful
Yeah.
to hear and
Sure.
Um
Wonderful.
And you know, gave them the schedule for next week in their groups and gave them opportunities to kind of take the lead in some different classes where I had supplies out and said, work with your department counselor as you're going to run this, run this camp. So kind of gave them some hands-on experience where they were supervised but got to do some actual, some actual teaching this summer, which was really good. And they, they were not happy, but we did tell them they were gonna switch halfway through. And I said, no, I said, I've taught a lot of grade levels, so you were gonna thank me by the end, that you get to, you know, be with different ages. Super important to be able to know how to work with all ages of kids and most of them were happy at the end that they, that they got switched, so. Um yeah, it was a really good summer. I've already got a list of probably like ten things I want to do for next summer. Um because as I'm going through, I'm like, this can be better, this can be better, we can do this. Um and I had some teachers approach me that have already asked, in the winter, can we put together a study group so we can start planning on how we want next summer to look, so the energy is there from the staff because they really enjoy it um for the second summer in a row with this the elementary program effort, that we can never go back to the old way we used to offer classes, like this is so much better, it's better for the kids, it's better for us. They're getting such a much more enriching experience. So it was a great summer. Does anyone have any questions?
Real quick, on the, your timeline.
Yes.
Do you start planning here in February?
About this.
So I was, I, you know, I was not paying attention, but I was going back there, so your summer enrichment coordinator starts in July, so.
Yeah.
Should you have the enrichment coordinator position for the rest of the year? If you're starting in February, as is.
Um I work on it mostly after the school day. Um there are times where I have to meet with people during the day, but most of it is later on and it's just kind of in addition to my regular job, so I don't, I, I know that this is how it has to go to make it happen, so I'm fine with it the way, the way it is. Yeah, but thanks for noticing that, there's a lot, it's a lot more than just showing up in July um to get it off the ground, so. Thanks. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to sharing that.
Ten point one, related to the Marathon Health contract, uh the motion. Discussion on that?
Yeah, I can. Um so we're gonna do the, um what is it, the contract, we will be doing virtually.
Yes.
And if we do it virtually, it said it would be offered Monday, Friday from May to July.
Well, that, I think that's standard right now, but we're gonna, we have adjusted hours that we're getting ready to roll out, so for the first six months, we have hours set, uh so it'll be within somewhere in the parameters of those hours. So there's some days where it starts at six-thirty and there's other days where it starts at nine and maybe ends at five-thirty, so there's it's staggered throughout, so the, I think between two different districts, starting times, anytime people can have access to that.
Right, it needs to be a maybe now, more than daytime hours, I think.
Right.
Because right now it's all daytime hours, so it's written down, this is just the middle.
No, over, all the hours are.
Yeah.
They fluctuate and then there's, there are some night hours too for.
Is that not offered in the description though? And will that adjust as?
Yep, it'll adjust based on need, yeah.
What, what exactly are we amending to this? I see it been a woman, I'm not sure what worth adding to it or changing.
Just the amendment piece is the uh the monthly fee of twenty-six sixty-seven, so in the first year you got a total fee cost of a thirty-two thousand four dollars to add the virtual mental health component. But the reason we ended up adding, weren't traditionally gonna do this right now, the reason we ended up adding it is because we saved a pretty significant amount of money just on the updating of the facility and opening of it, it didn't cost nearly what we thought it was gonna cost to um put a new carpet and paint and things like that, so there was some significant funds that were originally budgeted that allowed us the opportunity to add this in for that.
And this will be available for whom?
This is for our staff, anybody that is currently um on a health and transplant. Only ones that are, would be the folks that are on UMA, so the.
Anyone on Excel?
Yep, anybody on Excel is, has access, yes.
When is, um when will then it be open?
Right now, the, the shooting for starting is October tenth. So where I had the schedule there too, originally they thought probably December would be.
Yeah, because I keep looking when I go by, I say, there's science, I don't.
Yeah.
So and there definitely will be flexible hours to this.
Yep.
And it can vary.
It can vary, so they'll, they'll, based on what the need is and surveying, communication, things like that, they can adjust the time slots.
Because it looks like my, my office would be a little off, it's approximately twelve hours of service every I think, every week about. That's what the contract is for, if that's what that.
That's just the mental health piece.
Yeah, that's what I need.
Yeah. But the full piece is, it's a full.
So they find, like they'll need, if they find that there's a bigger need for more mental health hours and they shift, is that how it works or?
No, if we did that, we'd, we'd probably see an increase in cost if, if there was an increase in the need, that would, that would be an increase in cost.
You had a, um, SuperTas conference today, was it? A presentation, was it, how did that go?
Good, yeah, it went really good. So that was, we did it last, at the end of last year.
Yeah.
Um that went, it went pretty well, I mean, we're planning to have, there's more information that's gonna be coming out, we have weekly meetings with Marathon. Um they have a marketing specialist who will work with Luke in terms of PR, we're talking about how to build our own webpage for our staff that's associated to, to Marathon Health and what, you know, what the offerings are, even the online setting up for a office visit, whatever it might be, that they can access everything kind of in one place.
Is it, you just sounded like, is it mental health strictly virtual?
Yes, yep. It's a significantly increased cost to have someone um in person. But it's something that we said we'd look at, evaluate, start with the virtual piece and then if it's you know, if the need is there to make that shift, then it's a discussion we can consider.
There's been discussions about students would be under the coverage of apparent referrals from the NICE office, is that how it would go?
No, so it's only, only the dependents, only our staff and their children.
Right, so, so if it's a, it's a it's a staff's parent, that student can be referred.
Yep, absolutely.
I saw it here, the age is following up, it's not, not even five.
Yeah.
Is there any reason why it, it starts at age twelve?
I don't, I don't know specifically, I'd have to ask that question.
Because that's like middle school age.
I can answer that question.
Yeah, I'm curious about that.
It may have something to do with the fact that it's virtual and just the effectiveness of offering, but I'll find out.
I think, sure. Notice that certification that.
Yeah. And it may, and honestly, it may be something with New York State law, the, the age of being able to do a virtual session.
And we've already, they've already hired Marathon, he has the person that's gonna work in the plane?
Yep, yep, yeah, they've hired their staff, their training, their, and all, and all that process right now.
And what are the set hours right now, what are they scheduled?
Um I would have to go back and email because I just got one today to be able to say, I can send you that.
They're coming, yeah, I'll have to try, but I'm just curious. It's like six.
Yeah, some of them start at six-thirty during the week, six-thirty AM, and some of them start at nine and go till later, till six o'clock or something almost like. So it sh, it varies like throughout the week. That's one of those things we're just gonna kind of look at, evaluate, see how it's going and they said that they can make adjustments based on what our what the needs are that we're seeing, the trends that we see.
Hello?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Well, we already approved the Marathon part, so when we, I think this if we approve that, this would be a supplement to that, so it's about.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Public comments? I will follow up. Next meeting October sixth, twelve point two, discussion of pilot communication?
Let's just follow up, so um Bob is gonna be meeting with Ann to begin the process to start talking about um meeting with groups of staff to inform them about what, what really are the facts behind the pilot situation that we're in, so that's that's starting and we'll be kind of, I'm sure I'll get some groups soon, we'll be kind of pounding the pavement and have conversations with the folks and then smaller groups so they can feel comfortable to ask any questions or clarifications if they're.
So we get um a timeline, looking back from, let's say, the time of the vote unit, where we need to be a month out, two months out, three months out, just so
Yep.
We feel like we've got enough opportunity to communicate with the product.
Sure. You know, I think we have kind of a sketch of that, we should provide that, yeah.
Any other discussion on the pilot? Okay, we need a brief executive session.
Oh, okay, I just have to do one thing.
Okay.
There'll be no action, it's just.
Won't you be moved to the executive session?
So move.
Second.